No, people aren't wearing suits anymore. Unless you're late. Then you probably don't have to wear them.
No, just observing, yes. Just observing.
Will you stand for the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands,
It would sound scary.
one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kurt, could you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Ray?
Here.
Delby?
Here.
Armstrong?
Here.
Page? Stones?
President.
Lane?
Here.
Mayor Richardson?
President. We have public comment tonight. We have a number of folks who'd like to speak. We do ask that you present the comments and be respectful. We also ask that if the council will not comment on those comments, but I know that we'll have a three-minute timer up. You do have three minutes. I would love to have you keep it to that so that everybody has a chance to speak. Otherwise, things get a little drawn out. So first one I have up is Kurt Moffett. Kurt, if you want to come up and state your name and address, please, and then what you'd like to talk about.
My name's Kurt Moffett. My address is one five nine seven five Highway ninety-two. I'm here to speak about the trail crossing at Hillcrest Avenue. Hillcrest is a street that we use quite often to move farm equipment from one side of town to the other, and that is our preferred route to take. But since that trail crossing has been done, there's an island in the middle of the road, which I'm sure you're all aware of, and it restricts the width. Hillcrest is designated by the Iowa DOT as a farm-to-market road, and it's not able to be used for farm equipment at this time. I read through the memorandum that you guys are working on tonight, and I guess I'd like to point out that in that memorandum, it says, "A local farmer contacted staff about difficulty." There's, it's been many, many more than one farmer that's been affected by this, which would be my first comment. The second comment is the fact that the fire department has said that their larger vehicles cannot access the trail, and that seems to be blown by. I think that is quite a safety concern if an ambulance cannot get onto the bike trail. Hopefully, someone will speak more to that later. But with that being inaccessible, basically, we have to move from the Bloomfield area to the north side of town. So our other avenue is to go straight down ninety-two to sixty-five, sixty-nine, and then go straight north. Sixty-five, sixty-nine, if you look at DOT traffic counts from Iowa Street to the north side of town, has twenty thousand cars per day, whereas Hillcrest, in the first block from sixty-five, sixty-nine to Fourth Street, there is fifty-nine hundred cars in that first block. But then where the Hillcrest or where the trail crossing is, is only thirty-two hundred cars per day. So it's one-sixth of the traffic that we're affecting when we're driving through, going through all these stoplights on sixty-five, sixty-nine, I believe is very dangerous and a safety concern for us. So I would like you guys to reconsider that island and have it removed. Thank you.
Doug Onstot, you're up next.
My name is Doug Onstot, seventeen, six fifty-eight Illinois Street, Acworth. My operation is basically on G thirty-six, east about three miles, so we access that road continuously. First of all, the island to me is more of a safety hazard than it is a safety. The only reason I can see to have that is to allow someone to stop in the middle of the street and be protected. If you're looking for safety, let people know what's there. You can put the signs on the side. The street's plenty wide enough without the island for us to get through. But the way it is right now, we literally cannot even drive a tractor, let alone an implement. We can't even drive a single tractor through there because it's not wide enough. And it just doesn't make sense to me to have it there. I don't see a reason to have it there. You know, if you want the trail to be marked, put two yellow lines across there, you know? I just don't see a reason other than for somebody to stop in the middle of it, in the middle of the street. And to me, if someone's going through there, you've got signs, you've got all this stuff taking people's attention, and it, people could be missed. Somebody could be coming through there, and you'd miss them when you're driving through there. And in all honesty, people aren't driving twenty miles an hour through there, you know? They're going through thirty-five, forty mile an hour. So it's not something they can stop immediately. You know, we just, me personally, for us to get, we've got hayfields all around there. So we go down Iowa with a sixteen-foot mower, you know? That's not safe at all. We either have to do that, or we've got to go all the way around, like Kurt said. It just doesn't make sense. So what people are doing, and there are some of us in here that probably have done the same thing, have tried to get through there, hitting signs and tearing up equipment and everything else. And you go out there and look at that, you look at the curbs, you can see the black marks on all the curbs from cars, from trucks, from semis. They're just not hitting it right or whatever. And to me, it's just, it's just, it's an eyesore, I think, and it serves no purpose. So to me, it needs to be removed. I know the cost is probably astronomical for what it really should be, but it's just something that needs done, and the farmers use those roads every day. Vanderpools hauling heavy equipment through there. Otherwise, they've got to go through town, down Iowa Street. That doesn't make sense either. So to me, it's just something that needs to be addressed and not put off, and it's, it needs to be done now. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve Pfeifer.
I'm Steve Pfeifer, and I live north of town. We do travel, we farm east of there, and then we farm south of Indianola. And I think you've heard enough from these guys that, but the only thing I could say is, I think everybody in here has done a mistake someplace, like in their houses or something. And it's just an easy fix just to fix it, and, you know, it cures a problem for everybody. The curbs are really tall, so you've got to hit four of them. If you try to take a tractor over it, it just isn't a very accommodating system. And I think I drove through there today and up farther up by the, oh, senior home or whatever. I think there's crosswalks up there, and they're painted lines. So, I mean, that'd be, that should be what's down there. That's all I got.
Steve, can I have you give your official address, because she needs to put that for me?
Yeah, eight nine one four, one twenty-fifth Avenue.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Yeah.
We have to have it for our record. Roger Woodruff.
Roger Woodruff, eight five oh four, one hundred and sixty-fifth Avenue, Indianola. And basically, the same as Doug and the other guys have stated, it's just really hard to get through there with equipment. We've got to come to a complete stop. Cars don't pay any attention. I haven't been hit. But you've got to come to a complete stop, bounce up over those curbs. It's very hard on our equipment, hard on tires. Many people are texting and driving, which I know is illegal. They aren't paying any attention, and like I said, I haven't been rear-ended, and I haven't heard of anyone else, but it's going to happen. It was just a, I don't know who approved and who drew it up, but I'm not so sure they ought to have another job instead of doing that. That was a very, very poor design. If the curbs were at least rounded and smooth, you could get over without beating our equipment up so much. So I hope you take that into consideration, and something can be done to improve the situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Brad Kaufman?
Brad Kaufman, fourteen, nine thirty-one, eighty-fifth Avenue. Just pretty much echo the sentiments of everybody else with getting equipment and stuff through. And I know it wasn't a huge issue this year with the lack of snow and everything we got, but you guys, the city's snow piles and stuff can't even fit through there. So if we run into a situation where we had huge snow or something, that road's not even going to be open because the city's equipment can't even fit through there, so.
Thank you. Blake Woodruff?
Blake Woodruff, ninety-five, fourteen, one hundred and sixtieth Avenue. I guess, just kind of echoing everybody else, kind of the same deal. We really struggle getting through there with equipment. I'm worried about this fall, running through there with a combine. We've got the big, big floater tires on our combine. They're called LSWs. My concern is ruining one of those, going up and over those curbs. You've got a forty-thousand-pound machine sitting on eight inches of curb. A tire of that size is around thirty thousand dollars to replace if we'd happen to ruin it, damage a rim. List goes on and on. I've actually tore a couple of signs down going through with an Hydras bar. That's just the only route I had to go, and there's just not room. There's just not room for us. Wheeling tires on the edge of the curbs going through, it's just not a good deal. So my personal opinion, it's not, not in a good spot there for us to get through, so.
Thanks. Thank you very much. Adam Hill?
Adam, excuse me, Adam Hill, one one zero two eight, one hundred and sixty-fifth Avenue. Thanks for having this meeting tonight. Thanks for allowing us to speak. I don't use it as routinely as most of the folks you've heard before, but, and you can't fit. And I think you've heard people talking how they've actually tried to go through there, and they've talked about their equipment, but eventually, that median won't be there either with the farm equipment going through there. So you have some options. You've got, that's going to continue to happen, and the median's going to get destroyed, and then you've got to pay to fix it. They're going to quit going through there, and we're just going to go through town. You're going to go down Fourteenth Street, you're going to get on Iowa, you're going to go down Iowa. And then if you get to go all the way through, you're going to take Iowa Street all the way out to the city dump and cut your way through the residential streets. That doesn't sound like a very good, safe pattern to go. So I know budgets are tight, House File one seventy-eight's made things very difficult, but I would dig deep, find the money to remove that median and save yourself down the road damages that are done, whether it's in town, an accident, or damages to the streets in residential cities in town, the curbs in town. It's going to happen. Once one guy does it, another guy tries it, and then pretty soon, it's a pattern that, hey, it worked, so we're going to keep doing it. That's what we're trying, what we're going to do. It's just, it's what people do. For a safety, you know, an idea that I wondered about for safety, if you're looking for safety for bikers or for people using the trail, if that median wasn't there, why couldn't you have a post? If they push a button, and twenty yards down the road, you have an amber flashing light that starts to warn a driver, hey, there's caution ahead. If that driver can decide whether we're going to stop, whether we're going to go. I mean, it's not a stop sign, but at least it's giving a driver caution ahead, somebody is there. If people start to figure it out after a while, too, that, hey, that means somebody's in the, you know, wanting to cross. If we're a nice driver, we'll stop and let him cross. I'm not talking about the farmers. I'm just talking about people in general driving the road, driving that road. If that's a safety feature for the people on the trail, why couldn't that be, you know, an item? Instead of that median being there, put up a caution sign like that. So anyways, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, speakers. Appreciate all your input. There is an agenda item on the count, on the agenda tonight that's in the consent agenda, and I don't know if anybody's going to want to pull that. If they do, then we might have a little more discussion on that as well. So anything on the consent agenda we want to all to discuss any further?
Item N.
I need to pull P.
Item P. I take a motion then to approve everything but item N and item P.
Second.
Motion is second. Kurt, call the roll, please.
Member Lane?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Delby?
Aye.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Stones?
Aye.
Motion carries, six zero, five zero. All right, we'll go to item N then. I need a, let's have a little discussion here, and then we can, there's a recommendation. If you look at your packet information here, there's recommendations. One is just receive and file, the other's to have further valuation and modification. So I'm, let's wait and hold off on a motion until we come to some discussion. So Melissa, you want to start this? You wanted to pull that, too, so.
Sure. First, when we talked about this in the fall, we were presented with three options. One was to remove the median completely, and one was to file it down. The other was, I believe, to do nothing. And we had cost estimates for those options. So I'm curious why we weren't presented those along with this and why we would need to go back and do that work again. It's clear that we do have an issue. I was receiving calls before the road ever opened because they saw a problem with the width of the lane. There were farmers out there actually measuring it to make sure that their equipment was going to fit, and they knew right away that it was not, and it was going to present an issue for them. And we elected in the fall to postpone it to the spring to see what would happen. We've now heard what the results are. I've been out there. I've seen the tread, the tread marks on the curbs. We have one that's, one side of the curb that's damaged already. We have signs that are damaged. I've driven through there frequently, and I have yet to see a pedestrian standing in the middle of that median. If I were a pedestrian as fast as cars are going through there, I would make sure I could cross the road fully. I don't, I wouldn't stand in the middle. That's just me. I know the intent of it and why it was recommended. So I don't fault the design, but I, we do need to consider that we are a, an agricultural community, and that is a farm-to-market road. That needs to be taken into consideration. Our farmers pour a lot into our economic vitality.
I'm no engineer, but, you know, we just do kind of like a roundabout type of where it curves around? So make a little, make it a little wider that goes around the island? That way, we can keep the island, but we can make a wider path on each side of it so that larger trucks or combines or tractors.
Outside.
Yeah, on the outside, yeah.
Yeah, no, one of the options that was like, like bumper curbs or somewhere that kind of sloped. When we were first discussing it, and I kind of said in the fall, too, it was a farm-to-market road, so understand why it was done, you know, when it was designed that way. I mean, none of us were up here for it, so, you know, we kind of inherited the mess. But we didn't get snow either, and that was one of our reasons to kind of see what everything was going to go, how it was going to go, too, was not only the spraying for the farmers, but also the snow, which we didn't really get any of. So I still think we should be evaluating what we want to do there. And I would just say, too, I didn't like this being a memo on the consent agenda. You know, I felt when we said we wanted to bring it back for discussion, putting in a consent agenda kind of tries to avoid that. So, you know, I felt that was, should have been just a normal agenda item for us to discuss so that it didn't try to get slipped through. That's just me and my personal preference, but I think, you know, we know that there's an issue with the farm equipment that we were trying to talk about in the fall. You know, was maybe tried to say it wasn't going to be an issue, and so I do think we need to be looking at the three options to see what we can do. So that's my thoughts.
If I remember correctly, the price tag on one of the options was twenty-six thousand dollars. We heard the price on placing a tire on one of their pieces of equipment at thirty thousand dollars. I just don't think it's fair for farmers who bring so much into our economy. And it's not just us. These, these are people who are providing food and putting goods on tables across the country and even globally.
There was a question when we were, when this design came through, and I know you two were not on the council, but the question came at that point in time, and there were issues raised then about the median, whether or not it was going to be viable and workable. Wanted, and of course, they realigned that, so it made a little bit of a difference. And I know the reason for that is, again, to provide safety for somebody. If they start to cross and the car's coming too fast and they realize they can't make it, it becomes a safety issue. However, I'm sorry, whoever mentioned it about the lights. That's one of the things that I've been talking about when I was still a council member and not mayor, but was that we do need those flashing lights that somebody can push a button that flashes a light, and people have to stop because you are a pedestrian in a crosswalk, which is, then makes you liable if you have an accident or hit that individual. And so the, I, I just really think that, I know AP, you're here, but I don't want to put you on the spot. I think we, when we were talking about some of the options with the STBG grants, was some lighting and things along that line, but we went a different route, and that's okay. But maybe you can shed some light here and talk a little bit about that as well.
I'm counsel, AP, Public Works Director. I know when this was designed, the main criteria was, again, pedestrian safety at that time. But I don't think we have looked into options for putting a light or anything. I know there was no concepts put on that. There were several concepts proposed to the previous council members at some point, but once again, the priority is, again, pedestrian safety. But as we, as we have constructed it, we have got complaints about the farm-to-market road, and this is why this is an opportunity for us to review it again, so.
And that, and those things were, one of the priorities I had as a council member was to put lighting in not only that intersection, but also at Iowa and Sixth Street and Euclid because of the concerns there, too. So it's an overall thing, and that was one of my gigs, and it wasn't necessarily council perspective. But I do think there is some merit here. I was the one that had to call from one person that was last, in fact, I think it was last Thursday. And we talked through that, and then the issue was, well, at this point in time, they could file a claim with the city if there's some damage. But I do think Melissa's got a point that, and I, again, I don't want to, I've, now, my intent has never been to tell the councilor what they should do as mayor. I think that's your direction and what you need to do. But I also had some input when I was on the council, and so that's what I'm just stating here. So I guess from a council perspective, you need to give AP and his staff direction of what they need to do.
There was a comment, AP, that the city equipment doesn't fit through there. Is that true? Or does our equipment fit through there?
I think our snowplows played fit through that comfortably. That's eleven feet, six inches is the plain width, and they, they comfortably fit through that. You have to answer that.
So we have no issues whatsoever with plowing that road with the island as it is. We don't touch it any more than we touch any other curb in the city.
That's the width of the snowplow?
We have eleven and twelve-foot snowplows. We can make it through with our twelve-foot snowplow.
You can make it through with a twelve-foot, even though the lane's not twelve?
With the angle, like all snow, all the snowplows are, we can make it through with our twelve-foot plow. No problem without jumping the curb or anything. We had no problem plowing it. We had to plow Hillcrest four or five times last year. Where we didn't have as much snow as we've had in the past, we did have enough snow to plow it multiple times. We had no problem whatsoever.
Obviously, sitting up here for about a month now, I wasn't here when all this was done, but there, what I hear, there was no discussion about any kind of lighting or cautionary kind of lighting at all, that passageway?
It was before you two were on there, too. I think, if I remember right, we, it was basically that there was going to be some lines, and there would be some kind of a thing in the middle, a median in the middle, but there was never really any discussion about lighting or any of those kinds of things, as far as I remember. Bob and I can be corrected.
You're expecting me to remember conversations from a year ago. That ain't going to happen, Steve, so.
We've talked about the flashing lights off and on at different points along the trail.
Right.
There are several places that are really busy and who really use them, but I don't remember that being a part of the discussion last fall.
Yeah, probably wasn't last fall, yeah.
It was the three options presented to us specifically about the concrete.
Because as someone who's ridden that trail a lot, I don't get near that street without slowing down or stopping first. Because ten years ago or so, I don't know who said they go a little quicker than twenty-five or thirty miles an hour, but they do.
Yeah.
I understand that. I'm not saying I haven't been guilty of that, but it, you know, you can have some near misses there pretty easily. So the cautionary light thing, to me, makes a lot of sense, but I was just curious how it got to where we are.
The traffic coming from the east especially is going much quicker.
Do you guys mind if I ask Chief Hurd a question real quick? Would you mind hopping up? In the memo, it says here that your department has no ability to access the trail with some of your larger vehicles over there. Is that?
Yes, sir.
This is the first time I may hear about that.
About two weeks, we were invited to go and look and assess and determine whether or not we can make the lane with our ambulance. With the signage there where it is, and the discussion with AP is that it's where it needs to be per DOT regulations. We cannot access or make the turn with it there. There was some discussion that if we were to grind down back the curbs so far, that we would be able to maybe access it. AP was going to look into the logistics of it to see if that's something that we could do. With that being said, the width of the trail will accommodate the ambulances, but the tree canopy may or may not. And it would be our practice to go as far as we can with the ambulance and then to call for additional resources. So it'd be ATV in that case, in which. to plow it multiple times. We had no problem whatsoever.
Obviously, sitting up here for about a month now, I wasn't here when all this was done, but there, what I hear, there was no discussion about any kind of lighting or cautionary kind of lighting at all, that passageway?
It was before you two were on there too. I think, if I remember right, we, it was basically that there was going to be some lines and there would be some kind of a thing in the middle and a median in the middle, but there was never really any discussion about lighting or any of those kinds of things as far as I remember. Bob and I can be corrected.
You're expecting me to remember conversations from a year ago? That ain't going to happen, Steve, so.
We've talked about the flashing lights off and on at different points along the trail.
Right.
There are several places that are really busy and who really use them, but I don't remember that being a part of the discussion last fall.
Yeah, probably wasn't last fall, yeah.
It was the three options presented to us specifically about the concrete.
Because as someone who's ridden that trail a lot, I, I don't get near that street without slowing down or stopping first, because 10 years ago or so, I don't know who said they, they go a little quicker than 25 or 30 miles an hour, but they do.
Yeah.
I, I understand that. I'm not saying I haven't been guilty of that, but it, you know, you can have some near misses there pretty easily, so. The cautionary light thing, to me, makes a lot of sense, but I was just curious how we got to where we are.
The traffic coming from the east especially is going much quicker.
Correct.
Do you guys mind if I ask Chief Hert a question real quick? Would you mind hopping up? In the memo, it says here that your department has no ability to access the trail with some of your larger vehicles over there? Is that?
Yes, sir.
This is the first time I may hear about that.
About two weeks, we were invited to go and look and assess and determine whether or not we can make the lane with our ambulance. With the signage there where it is, and the discussion with AP is that it's where it needs to be per DOT regulations. We cannot access or make the turn with it there. There was some discussion that if we were to grind down back the curbs so far, that we would be able to maybe access it. AP was going to look into the logistics of it to see if that's something that we could do. With that being said, the width of the trail will accommodate the ambulances, but the tree canopy may or may not, and it would be our practice to go as far as we can with the ambulance and then to call for additional resources. So it'd be ATV in that case, in which we wouldn't have a problem if we had our ATV. It'd just take a while for us to, to mount a response with the ATV. So initially, we'd try it with ambulance. I believe North Ninth is going to be the closest access now. And as long as we were on the trail, I think we could probably get between. It's just making that turn off of Hillcrest onto the trail itself. We just can't accommodate it with the duly on the ambulance.
With the curb in place, is that what you mean?
Yes, sir.
Good point.
But that would get you to Hillcrest. It wouldn't get you beyond, would it?
I, I, I think if we're going straight down the trail, we could probably navigate it. We may drive on the sides or up, up over the curb. We'd have to have to take it slow so we don't blow a tire. But we'd have to, I mean, again, we'd have to get on North Ninth and then maybe, we haven't tried it. The only thing that we had looked at, AP, is, was the logistics of the ambulance, like even the dimensions of the ambulance. He was going to go look and see if we did grind the curbs back on that island in between sign to sign, if we could probably then make the turn, go in the direction of travel.
That was my question, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I remember this discussion when it came up, and I think the direction was, we've been told repeatedly by our engineers that this is going to work great. Let's see if it does before we try to fix something that may or may not be broken. Sure sounds like this is probably not set up very well. You know, especially disheartening to find out that there probably wasn't good consideration given for getting our department ambulance out on the trail. Part of the reason for this, to get that we're a farm community, we're also a community that has tens and thousands of bikers that use that trail. That's the, that's the rub.
Right.
It's that road and that crossing is not just for one use. It's for folks in town, it's for recreational biking, it's for, you know, those that run a jog, it's for our farmers that have equipment to use that road, and it's, you're trying to come up with a one size fits all for everybody. Yeah, I'm fairly disappointed. Glad that we gave it some time without major consequence to have real world application, but I think we need to probably explore some solution, and I would encourage, I'm, I'm not ready to just go and say one of the options that was put forth last time was the right answer. I'd hope we take a little bit deeper thought. Clearly, we've swung and missed on a few fronts here, and, you know, it happens in these projects, it's unfortunate, but revisit this in some capacity, keeping all the users here in mind. So, whether that's a combination of lighting, grinding curbs, whatever, I don't know how we're going to do it, but at least have a solution thrown out there.
My suggestion might be that, you know, if you want to do this, but send it back to engineering, to our staff rather, and give us some options for grinding options for maybe some kind of lighted sign that was mentioned, although I would prefer the ones that are actually at the, at the trail itself and start flashing and basically tells people to stop at that point in time, but I don't know, is there any other option? I know, Ron, you mentioned maybe trying to go do a little bit of a bypass on that or something, roundabout type thing.
Just about the outer curbs.
Yeah, so it'd be, it'd be kind of like an oval, right? You just kind of swing around and make, make sure it's wide enough for.
And then we got to still accommodate ambulances too on that, so they can get up there and get the trail and.
And it'd be even easier for the ambulance.
It should be, yeah, absolutely. You want to have staff refer those three?
Yeah, I think we got to go back and have them revisit it and provide us all the options and we can make a sound decision at that point.
Doug Fulton, do we need to make right, do we need to take official action on this, or do we just go ahead and direct staff to take this item and bring back some ideas?
There's only a receiving file, so you can just direct staff.
Okay.
Can I add one more thing?
Absolutely.
I would also like to know if there are grant funding options for each of the three.
Only problem with that is it might take longer, but we can sure find that out, so let's just, let's explore that. Jackie, do you have all those down?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions on, on this particular item? We're just going to receive it, we're going to send it back to staff, and AP, as soon as maybe you can work on that and get something back to us in a timely manner. Thank you.
I'll thank everyone for.
Yeah, thank you for your input.
Need to make a motion to approve.
Item P.
Item N, though?
No.
If you don't want to receive it and file it, no.
No, we're just going to go ahead and direct staff. I do need a motion on item P, though. Got a motion in the second. Thank you, folks, appreciate your input. Jackie, call the rule, please.
Councilmember Dobby?
Aye. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. AP, I, I'm abstaining.
Okay.
And if I need to say why, I have two family members on there.
Yeah, that's fine.
Armstrong?
Aye.
We're trying to get him on there for sure. All right. Sir, but Melissa, did you have a meeting this last week, or is there a report there? Council reports?
We did have a meeting. I was just getting my, putting under me, we approved the budget and went through the various project options. I'm sorry, I don't have all my notes prepared for tonight.
You want to move?
Can I defer to the next meeting?
Absolutely.
So that I can give you a detailed update.
Thank you, that's fine. Any other committee reports? Anybody have any? Okay, Treasurers' Report. Does anybody have any questions on Treasurers' Report? Motion then to receive and file the Treasurers' Report.
So moved, second.
Motion in the second, Jackie?
Councilmember Armstrong?
Aye.
Stones?
Aye.
Lane?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Dobby?
Aye.
Community update, we've got a lot of things coming up here, folks. There's on June 6th, well, first of all, Memorial Day is the parade, it's the VFW has their annual parade and convening a program out at the cemetery on the east side of the highway by the Junior Edwards Memorial. I believe that's at 10:30, I believe, if I'm not mistaken. We have June 6th, 15th, I think it is, we have the Chambers event on the square. Dad's, Dad's Day, I guess would be the way to put it, and a lot of things going on. I will be presenting the seniors on the Mayor's Youth Council with their cords for volunteering on the 22nd at the ceremony for seniors at the high school. A lot of good things going on. I know that people are getting geared up. I know you all, most of you, I have kids in sports and things too, and so there's a lot of things going on, so. I also attended a MYLOG, which is the Mid-Iowa Legislative Group that is mayor's and, and city managers. I attended that last Wednesday, first one I've attended. I probably will want to try to join that group. Lot of good conversation at that point in time, the legislature had not adjourned, and so there was a lot of discussion about the property tax bill that was still viable in legislature that did not get brought up. It is viable for next year. It did pass the Senate Ways and Means Committee and passed the Senate, so the, the consideration for most of the attendees at that meeting was to work hard in the interim time to try to find some opportunities for discussion with our state legislators. And I'm hoping that when we get our new city manager here on May 28th, and as we work through that process, we have an opportunity to meet with our state legislators sometime before the next session starts. So, a lot of good things there. Couple of things that did get passed that are a little bit concerning, a little more than a little bit concerning. A late amendment got stuck in the standings bill, which was the last bill that they usually run in the Senate and the House. It did change the funding for 911 services. I know that Chief Hert sent some information out and sent something to the governor, and I was going to do the same personal note and be concerned about that simply. Recognized as National Public Works Week in the city of Indianola, and all citizens are encouraged to recognize the contributions of our public works professionals and the important role they play in sustaining and improving the quality of life in our community. Signed this 19th day of May, 2025. Aaron, do you have your camera?
I have iPhone, if that works.
If that works, I'd like to have Caleb and AP, let's just go ahead and take a picture if we can, if that's okay. Move my case, he's got all this.
Cookies, maybe?
Anyway, appreciate your efforts and everything you guys do for the city of Indianola.
Picture.
Here we go, guys, three, two, one, three, two, one.
Thank you very much, guys. Thank you. You bet, AP, thank you, you bet.
Do you like your social media?
No. All right, we're into old business. We have a second consideration of an ordinance amending Chapter 160, Section 307 of the Code of Ordinances in Indianola, Iowa, which is recreational burning. Council may vote to waive the third reading. I think we just need to adopt a second, and then we'll have a motion on the third, if I'm not mistaken. Any discussion or questions?
If we're going to be waiving the third, have we had, has any committee member reached out and had, had any input?
I, I've had somebody express concern. Their spouse, their neighbor was burning. Spouse has some heart and lung issues, has some asthma, and said their neighbor was burning, house filled with smoke. Josh got the same text. I responded with, have you, you know, do you even approach a neighbor initially or any of that, explain, I have some of those same conditions and understand you've got to be careful, but I, I looked at the material, Josh probably did too, that this individual sent to look at as far as issues that it causes. I tried to explain, you know, well enough where we were. And so I, I think if anything, I personally would like a little more time to do a little more research. As far as the third reading, I'm okay with going forward tonight with the second, and then just have the third reading put off until our next meeting if we could. Just so I can say I did my due diligence to this individual. Anyone else had any?
Aaron Hert, Fire Chief, the mayor did share with me that Rhonda Marchant had expressed some concern over, and she did do some research and gave some very valid points, and her concern was the particulate matter, particularly which can be very high when burning, even with seasoned lumber. So the particulate matter that's given off when you're burning can be high. Her other concerns as far as volatile organic compounds by burning dry seasoned wood, not allowing them to burn painted wood or green treated lumber, will help with keeping those contaminants out of the air, those toxins out of the air. So her concern with the, with the particulate matter is, is a valid concern. As far as I'm concerned, though, the cost benefit of then enforcing a, a good burning ordinance and then following the International Fire Code, I still believe it'd be in the best interest of the community to continue, but certainly agree that maybe waiving that, waiting on that third reading would be ideal as well.
I'm having the same thought as Bob, I think it'd be good to just go through the third, my preference would be to go through it, a little more time to read. I've gotten several calls, very positive on this as, as an ordinance, so I think it's certainly, you know, like all things, it's, it's never easy to bring everybody happy to your best. I'd like some more time to research on the stuff that Rhonda and other people have sent over, and I'd like to move forward.
I think the issue too, if I'm not mistaken, Chief, is that people sometimes, here's the concern too, we have, people have solo stoves and we have all those kinds of things in the backyards, they're using them currently, which technically is not allowed, if I'm not mistaken. But the point is that if they throw leaves or other kinds of grasses, or like you said, painted lumber or anything along that line in there, that it does cause a lot of smoke, and that's where we're trying to get that stopped. And if you, if, if somebody does report somebody with a fire that has a lot of smoke, what's under this ordinance, what would be the situation that happens at that particular time? time?
So if we have somebody that's doing illegal burning, essentially what we've done is created so that before it wasn't enforceable, so there was no teeth. What essentially what would happen is we would get called, it would usually be a neighbor that was irritated. So some people would get away with burning, some people not, just depends on who your neighbor is. We'd get called, then we'd get there and tell them just to extinguish the fire. And so it not, it's very common then to have to have follow-ups with these people that continue then wait a few weeks, you know, months or whatever, and then continue to burn in their backyard. I did, when I came into the position here as Fire Chief, talked to Chief Shear about maybe how we could manage that a little better. He had talked about maybe when we go out, having our fire marshal follow up and then putting some enforcement into it. So essentially what we'll do is we'll turn it over to Chief Shear, he'll write a ordinance citation, we'll then answer for it in court. It's going to, we're talking about $200 fee for the first, well, 200 or 250, do you remember? I think it's 250, I'm sorry, 250 for the initial and then 500 for the second. And so essentially what we're doing is we're really starting to put some teeth into this. The problem that we have with this is that we're so inconsistent with it, so we've got a campground that falls within the city limits where people recreational burn nonstop. So what sets them apart and allows them to do it versus somebody that's in the community just very inconsistent across the city as a whole. And so in order to make it consistent, this is to make that recreational fire available to, for the city to enjoy, and not much different than other communities, Sponderant, Ankeny, Ames, we did do some research. So gives some comfortable enjoyment for, for the community members to go out and enjoy it without the concern of the fire department coming out. And then when we do get calls, even if they are burning legally and it's irritating a neighbor, we do have the authority in this ordinance then to extinguish the fire if it's putting off noxious smoke. That can happen with inefficient burning, so if they don't start the fire right, they don't get it hot enough, and then using seasoned lumber, they're gonna, they're gonna have this noxious, noxious smoke situation. And so just writing a good ordinance, making some consistent enforcement, then it makes it consistent across the city instead of, or, or policy, in my opinion.
And I would say to your point, chief, I have had a chance to do a little bit of research, and there are a number of communities within central Iowa that have such ordinance.
It's council's pleasure.
Do a motion to approve the second.
Second reading. A motion, I need a second.
Second.
Motion, the second. Clerk call and roll, please.
Councilmember Stones?
Aye.
Lane?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Delby?
Aye.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. We'll have the third reading on the next meeting. Fiscal year 25 budget. We have a public hearing regarding the Second Amendment to the fiscal year budget. I need a motion to enter into a public hearing. Motion in the second. Clerk, please call and roll.
Councilmember Ray?
Aye.
Delby?
Aye.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Stones?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. We are now in a public hearing. Do we have anybody in the audience who wishes to speak? Jackie, you have anything for us?
Yep. Just a reminder that a budget amendment is required when the expenses are going to be over the budgeted amount. This amendment includes changes to revenues and expenditures determined by the departments as they went through and reviewed their FY '25 budget per council direction when they were creating their FY '26 budget. So there's a lot of changes in there that you'll notice, and that's from the work the departments did. Most of the changes, some notable changes are an increase in the economic development expenses for legal fees related to all of the development agreements that we've been doing and IPAC's Mural Project. There's an increase in the debt service expenses for the arbitrage fees that we have to pay. We collected higher interest rate than we paid on the loan for South K and Hillcrest. You guys approved that claim in the claims packet tonight. There's an increase in capital project expenses for streetscape, architectural expenses from OPN and the Regions Bank property utilities, maintenance and other issues there. We reduced revenues budgeted from the state for backfill and business property tax credit. We just estimated a little high on that one. And reduced revenues, revenues from fees, rentals and a budgeted grant that we were hoping to get. We increased revenues for the South K Street assessments. We got about $90,000 in those. Corrected some of the category classifications for revenues. We adjusted transfers for employee benefit revenue, capital projects and IWC transfers, and then we moved the facilities expenses from the business to the general government classification. That was pre-approved by the council to go ahead and move those, and now we need to do a budget amendment to get those corrected with the state budget and then add the city manager contract fees in there. Are there any questions?
So it's, it's 1.4 million? And I'm looking at the notice of public hearing amendment, right? So if you look at the current amendment column? Okay, I just want to make sure I was understanding when I was going through the packet yesterday. Any other questions? Hearing none. Clerk will call and roll then. To, we, I'm sorry, we need a motion to get, move out of public hearing?
So moved.
Get me out of myself. Motion, the second, to exit public hearing. Clerk call and roll, please.
Present Delby or Armstrong.
Armstrong.
Okay. Councilmember Stones?
Aye.
Lane?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Delby?
Aye.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Five zero, I need a budget, I need a motion for the resolution approving the Second Amendment to the fiscal year 25 budget.
So moved.
Motion, the second. Clerk call and roll, please.
Councilmember Armstrong?
Aye.
Stones?
Aye.
Lane?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Delby?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Emerald Bay, we have a public hearing regarding the vacation of 20 feet of storm sewer easement in Emerald Bay Platte. I need a motion to enter into a public hearing. Lane's got the motion?
Second.
Second, a motion, the second. Clerk call and roll, please.
Councilmember Ray?
Aye.
Delby?
Aye.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Stones?
Aye.
Lane?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. We're now in a public hearing on the vacation of 20 feet of storm sewer easement in Emerald Bay Platte One. I'm guessing that Bill, you are up on this one, if I'm not mistaken.
I'm up. So I'll just go through the Platte and the vacation as one, and then you can kind of skirt through the motions after that. But because of the realignment of some of the lots in Emerald Bay Platte Two, due to the developer receiving interest on one of the lots, the storm sewer easement that was straddling the two lots has to be vacated and then moved further to the west. So that's why we're vacating the storm sewer easement as part of this new final plat. And then here, all lots that are being, going to be realigned are interior lots, none of them touch any of the exterior private citizens' lots. The lot in question really that kind of triggered this is the lot that's to the southeast there. Initially, it was a lot smaller than that, and then the west part of that was supposed to be part of the parkland, the parkland lot. The developers' potential client asked that we realign this to make it larger to accommodate their needs. As such, that lot went from about an acre to about, about two acres. That parkland that was originally there has been shifted further to the north. So the pond originally was part of that multifamily lot to the northwest there. That lot has become a little bit smaller, so the pond will be totally encompassing the city's outlot there, so there'll be no easement there. Lot three, I think it is, yep, that small townhome lot, that's gone a little bit smaller. So we take, we took away a little bit of parkland, but we increased the total area of the parkland in other parts of the plot. So that's the whole basis of the realignment there. I don't have much else to add. All the other easements are staying the same, the utilities are staying the same. Have you taken any questions? We recommend approval of the Platte subject to any remaining staff comments and review of the legal documents. Do you have any questions?
So is the parkland, alot W?
Yes.
Okay. So the utilities, storm sewer that would have gone through there, Bill, where's that going to run now? We lost it.
Sorry.
That one's fine. Okay.
The west side of lot one. It's just shifted to the west.
Okay. Any other questions? Comments? I need a motion to move out of the public hearing then? Second. Got a motion, the second. Clerk call and roll, please.
Councilmember Delby?
Aye.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Stones?
Ray?
Aye.
Ray?
Motion carries five zero. I need a resolution approving the vacation of storm sewer easement and moving from there.
So moved.
Motion, the second. Clerk, call and roll, please.
Councilmember Lane?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Delby?
Aye.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Stones?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Resolution approving the final plat for Emerald Bay Platte Two. Motion, the second, please. Motion, the second. Clerk, call and roll, please.
Councilmember Lane?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Delby?
Aye.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Stones?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. New business, vacant employment positions. Discussion direction on filling vacant positions in the Wellness Center Department. Who is up on this one? Heather, I guess you're up.
Hello, Mayor and Council. The positions that we're requesting are replacement positions for member service staff certified and non-certified swimming instructors. They have been budgeted for, in fact, the revenue side of the programming for the instructors is necessary to hold the programs, and the member service staff, we need them operationally to, to be at the welcome desk. Would entertain any questions?
Any questions?
No.
Questions for me? Okay. The direction is, we don't need to vote on this, do we, Doug? Okay, so direction is to go ahead and fill those positions, is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion, direction on filling vacant position in the police department. We have, what's vacant, I guess, is the question here.
Captain Hawkins, Police Department. Currently, we have a vacant position. We are sitting at 22 officers currently. Tonight, we are requesting one of those positions to be backfilled, but we are currently down to.
Okay.
Open any questions you might have about our staffing.
Which, which, are you filling the officer position then?
Correct, yes.
I'd had some conversation with chief about movement and promotions and various things.
Yeah, there'll be additional information forthcoming, but for tonight, we're asking for one of the backfill positions because just of timing of certain events.
So we lost one officer to Dallas County, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Job then, and then we had an officer retire, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And that's where we are. So we're backfilling one of those two positions, but the officer position right now.
Yes.
If a non-certified applicant is chosen, how long does it take before they actually are able to join and be on patrol route?
Minimum, that's a, by the time they're actually road ready, is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
By the time we would get them hired and do training, we're probably looking at solid 10 months ballpark.
I think I've asked this before, but non-apple, I'm sorry, if a non-certified applicant is chosen, do they have to stay with the force for a certain number of years after we've invested resources into their academy training?
Yes, sir. They've signed a four-year contract.
Okay.
And, you know, it's, it's basically a proration of time. So they leave in three years, then they would owe the city one year of time for academy expenses.
Thank you. Counsel, okay with approving that position, filling that spot?
Yeah.
Yes.
My thought was to wait for Jacob to come and evaluate the general funds. But that's, that's me, I'm one.
Yeah.
So considering the troubles we've had with our general fund budget, I, I would have preferred to wait for Jacob to start, look at the budget, evaluate, and then come back. But then I'm the one, which is fine.
No, what I will tell you is that Doug and I had a conversation with Courtney this today with Jacob. I know he's been very much involved in watching what we're doing and watched all of our meetings and actually we've got into a lot of the documents on different things, and correct me if I'm wrong here on anything, but I think he's taken a pretty accurate role already. His last day is tomorrow at Brookings, and he moves down here this weekend, I believe. So, but a valid point, I'm not trying to dismiss the point, so.
When we were going through budget discussions, we're still somewhere around $700,000 short, and the police department was about that much over budget. And when we were going through the whole budget process, we moved a significant amount from Parks and Rec to the PD to balance their budget. At some point, we need to move that money back. So in my mind, PD's really still over budget, and throughout the course of discussions, we ask, you know, at what point? Because we can't continue to allow the allocation to be out of, out of balance, basically. If you look at allocations statewide, which we did look at from Iowa League of Cities standpoint, our public safety is running very high compared to other cities. And so how do we get our public safety budget to be in check? I know that staffing studies showed that we need 24 officers. The question is, how do we get, how do we get their budget in, in line? I don't know. I also ask, how many officers could we do without? We, of course, don't want to jeopardize public safety. I, I don't, I don't want to go there.
You can have one without the other, though. Just my thought. So Rob, if we, if you stay at 22, I mean, what does that do for hours having to be picked up by, by other officers?
Yeah, we're definitely having to backfill shifts. We're down to four officers on two of the three patrol shifts, days and overnights. Both only have four officers. We have five officers assigned to mid-shift, which is our afternoon patrol, so we're sliding that person down to kind of help cover nights. And then between lieutenants and detectives, myself, we've been covering shifts as well to kind of backfill. But with vacations and things of that nature, you know, that's, you know, it's definitely going to increase operational costs just over time, especially with the busy summer months coming ahead, which filling a spot, you know, takes some time too. So, but yeah, there's definitely impact, especially on the number of patrol officers, and most of the patrol shifts are now going to probably be rolling more on the minimum side, especially through the busy summer months.
So if, I read something from, your chief sheer talked about, there's a point in time where overtime becomes, becomes a situation where we're really spending more money than, than what it would cost us to get somebody in place, if I'm not mistaken in my conversations. All right, we're using overtime then for those people that have to cover some of those shifts, is that what we're doing currently?
At times we are. We've been also working, we've been getting creative to the extent possible with flexing hours and, you know, you know, changing days on patrol for the officers, things of that nature, where if they work, you know, on a day they weren't supposed to, then they get a different day off when we have, when we had additional manpower on the schedule. So we're doing our best to try to minimize overtime the best we can, but, you know, it's a reality, it's the cost of doing business. So, I mean, we have to have patrol officers on the street, so it's not, there's no, there's no easy way or no, no way possible to eliminate overtime. It's not going to happen.
You know, he gave me a number of how many shifts you had filled in the last month or two, and that number's probably going to keep growing.
Yeah, it's, I wasn't prepared to have that number in my head, but I do the schedule, and I can tell you that we call it, there's a lot of yellow, which means there's an overtime shift or a change or flex in people's schedules up or down to cover shifts. And there's a significant portion of yellow on that schedule for the foreseeable future.
Will be the case even if this is filled until that person's ready, right?
Yes, sir.
Longer we wait on that, the more overtime that you accumulate. What's the direction? I need four of you to say yes before we move forward, so.
Yeah, I'm a yes for right now, and I agree to a certain extent on the waiting for Jacob. I just, I look at this as we may be looking at large philosophical shifts from a budget perspective. We've hired someone to help us through that. I think it's unrealistic to think he's going to come in and have that solved within the first three months. I think it's going to take time. I would hope they'd come in and listen quite a bit and do a lot of learning before there's a lot of decreeing. I think we're still under what our stated goal has been for years with backfilling this position. I think we're going to have a lot of discussions about PD staffing this year, I have a feeling. So to the mayor's point of timing and some of your question, like, for me, this is one that, like, I think this makes sense to backfill this time. It may, we may end up in a philosophical shift later when our expert is here. I mean, I've read staffing studies, I've read a lot of stuff, I've talked to the chief and the captain and different people, and like, I don't know that I know the right answer that solves it all. That's why I'm hiring a city manager. Get in the middle of all this stuff and help us. We've done a lot of work to get us close, to get us in a better spot. Just, I'm ready for that person to be here, but I'm also not ready to burden them with some of these decisions day one, even like day ninety-one. In my opinion. So I'm a yes at this point.
Yeah, I would agree with Josh on that. Like, there are going to be a lot of demands placed on Jacob when he walks in the door. And this is the one I think you want to drop in his lap. I mean, he's been hired because of his expertise and experience that he's going to bring us, but that all isn't going to happen overnight. And to your point, Steve, kicking it down the road a little bit, just moves that ten-month date back that amount as well. I think until he gets here and has time to get his arms around things, this is something we have to do.
So I'm just looking at Chief's message to me, and if I can just share some of the things that we, I had forgotten that he also mentioned that we have an officer on light duty not expected to return until early 2026, which I think changes my thought a little bit. But he, he shared that since May eighteenth to June fourteenth, they have filled six open shifts with salaried employees, which includes lieutenants, captains, captain and chief. Moved officers from their normal shifts fifteen times, and they have four overtime shifts scheduled for that time period as well. Some of the things he shared with me when I was asking questions.
One thing I'd add to, we're looking at the fiscal year twenty-six fund balance in the Police Department is over twenty-seven percent. So their fund balance is above what the council policy is asking for. So there's a little room there.
My point is that that's because we moved money from Parks and Rec.
They've met the policy that the council's asked for, and they're above that, so there should be room for this.
So are you okay with this one?
I'm okay. Given that we have another one out on light duty, I mean, we're really down another one, right?
That is accurate.
You brought that up, I think at the last meeting as well, didn't you?
We have majority consensus here. We do have four that are in favor of that, so I think we're okay to move forward then, that plan in time, so.
Thank you, Council.
You bet.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, we have, next item up is direction on regarding naming rights for you and all Wellness Campus. Is this yours, Doug, or is this?
I have notes here, sorry.
Okay.
As you may remember, we've been working with Sportsman Solutions for naming and sponsorships that figure part since last year. They've increased our sponsorships there from ten to twelve thousand a year to about forty thousand this year, so we're seeing some good results there. We also asked them to work with IWC on naming rights and sponsorship opportunities there. So if they've worked through taking this to the market, trying to figure out what facility might be able to bring us, and we've looked from other facilities that are close, sports complexes and wellness centers and fitness centers and rec centers Metro and Iowa, come to an agreement, a proposed agreement with DeArmen for ten years with an upfront payment of $140,000, and that they would be the official automobile dealer of the IWC. So the name would be the Wellness Campus powered by DeArmen. Also have, we would like to get a direction on council if we want to continue through that. Signage on the front, assigned towards the entrance of the facility. I think three more signs inside the building. But then also work with other sponsor businesses that are looking to be sponsors as well. So we have another $40,000 over the next five, four years on top of that, five years, sorry, from three other businesses that we're working with. And there's some more that are still in the works. So we just want to get this one started. This is the biggest one, of course. It talks about the name of the facility. Want to make sure we have council buy-in for that. And if agreement extraction is good, then we will work on that agreement, tweak it, get all the right words together, work with legal, and then bring it to a June meeting.
I like it. It's great.
Have we determined how we're going to use the?
Look through the budget and determine if the staff.
Little problem to have.
Still not going to fix every problem, but it's part of the solution.
Very thankful for DeArmen.
I see that the direction is that you'll bring it forward back in June. I would like to bring some things forward that concern me. I do take my role seriously when it comes to accountability and due process. I feel that a clear criteria and approval structure needs to put, be put in place for something like this. Looking at the value of the dollar amounts and the timeline, needs to have like some sort of matrix in my, in my opinion. I also think with the city manager coming on, it would be good to loop him in. But I don't, I'm not trying to like stop any process. I think it's great to look at the revenue side of it, but I think that there needs to be just some transparency and accountability in what that looks like and what our expectations are. We do have to pay Sponsor Solutions a fee also, and we do pay for the signage, so it's not exactly the dollar amount that it looks like, and maybe you have all that information, but I do think that just needs to be taken into consideration as well. So that's all I wanted to share.
Do we have, do we know what that percentage is? Thirty percent.
So if we move forward, we're still able to have other naming rights, or like maybe Quickstar Court or it's where you're still able to name other parts of the facility, right? And that's what you said, you were working on it, additional naming rates as well?
Is that a, that thirty percent, that's a one-time?
Whenever we get payment, then they get thirty percent.
Each contract.
Right, but I guess my question was when you said thirty percent, I'm thinking that, and you said over ten years, I'm thinking, well, they don't get thirty percent of it each year.
No, it's right up front.
Right, okay.
Doug, some of the others that you've looked at are paid in a different manner. Can you kind of explain that a little bit?
Some will pay yearly, some will pay for two years upfront, and then a five-year deal. So all of those are what we'll work through in each of those contracts.
But this one is a hundred, I mean, it's, the amount of money's a hundred and forty thousand right up front. And there's no, I know that you told me that some of the, some of them are monthly or yearly contributions over a ten-year period or whatever, five-year period in some cases as well. But this is a hundred and forty thousand minus the thirty percent right up front, so. And there were some other things that we're going to throw in there, too, if I'm not mistaken.
Do you think it's important when we're talking about this, unless I'm misunderstanding it, it is a hundred and forty thousand, but it's really a hundred thousand. And then it's really probably eighty thousand by the time we pay for all the signage. That's on us.
Signage will not be twenty thousand dollars.
Ten thousand is what I'm saying for a big exterior sign. I assume it has to be on the monument out front as well as the side of the building, and then you said three more inside, either way.
We'll work with DeArmen on making sure that we meet what they're looking for.
So I just think the important thing here is, is do we think the naming rights are worth nine thousand dollars a year for the next ten years? I don't know. I don't know how that is compared to other cities have facilities like that, you know? That'd be the big question we're about to commit ten years. And so, you know, I'm curious, I've gotten a couple emails from folks involved that, you know, I just, I don't, I'm torn on this because at this point, I very, very much want this facility to stop losing money. I also want to make sure that we're doing it the right way. I know that they, when this was getting built initially, they went to a lot of local businesses directly and raised money. It bums me out that we're having to pay someone thirty percent to get money from local businesses. Why we haven't done that over the last, what, two years that we've owned it, that's disappointing. But the big thing is just, is it worth nine thousand a year? And what does ninety thousand do for that facility to help us sustainable?
Well, I think your question about versus other cities, while it's valid, doesn't matter.
I know.
It's, who's lining up in this city to put up that kind of money is my question. Steve?
Yeah, I know, Mike, I'll get him, Mike. As soon as Heather's down here, I'll get Mike up to the podium here, so.
But I, to me, I think that's the question. And Doug, you mentioned, I think, I'm getting a senior moment maybe, but I think, I think you mentioned when you first told me about this, other businesses in town were approached, and it's a pretty extensive list, if I'm not mistaken, correct? And the, and the competition for those dollars is only going to increase with the addition of others like spaces, correct?
Heather's going to get Mike up to the podium here and see.
Again, just want to say, I recommend moving forward, that you create some sort of matrix with a dollar amount and a timeline to make decisions like this more clear.
Yeah, someone that did this for a living, I can tell you having what Heather suggests is valid. You know, you've got naming rights and you've got percentages of the cost of projects and all those things, but having it laid out so you can avoid some of these kinds of conversations going forward is very valid.
Mike Bethke, seven oh four, West Seneca Valley, Iowa. My concern with this is it's reminiscing of what, reminiscent of what we did ten years ago when we took money up front. At $750,000 from two entities in town just to get the thing built, which was good at the time. But if you look over time, that didn't turn out to be such a, a good deal for the community, I don't think, nor the, the facility. So I'm kind of with Josh here.
Be careful, I don't know that we're together. Sure we're going fully on this.
Well, we take a hundred and forty thousand dollars up front, take all the cost off and all that sort of stuff. We spend that balance right now, well, down the road, it's not a hundred and forty thousand dollars when you get inflation added on. I'd rather see us take that money over time and work with it at that point. Now, it's only nine thousand dollars, basically ten years, but to take it up front and to spend it up front, I, I'm just not in favor of that because of what we got into ten years ago when we built that thing.
I mean, I would, I don't know, I don't want to get into too much, just to be clear on my position. I think they're fundamentally different agreements. The seven fifty up front was also something that cost us every year to maintain, and with more use and with age becomes more expensive. This is simply, do we want to buy signs, right? Do we want to be paid to put signs up? And I don't disagree with your point at all, right? Like, I say it to say it out loud, but yeah, it's only worth what someone will give us in, in Indianola right now, and, you know, I think it's, my biggest thing is, can we use ninety thousand dollars to positively impact and put us on the path towards sustainability here, right? Making sure we're doing things that are one-time positive costs, not making mistakes that we've made out of some of the budget stuff we've gone through, where you have recurring expenses out of reserves, right? We'd be prudent on that front.
One of the things, too, is to not use all of those funds right up front, but to save them, to make a plan, to slowly either invest in equipment, invest in staff, whatever we end up doing over time, so definitely not spend it right off the bat.
And that's where I'm at, is like, I'm okay with negotiating this and going further, but I also, before we sign an agreement, I would like some type of plan for this in the absence of a city manager at the moment, in the absence of some of the different things. Yeah, but again, trying to be that balance of, hey, Jacob, it's day two, why don't you have it all figured out? Right? That's what we want to avoid.
Right.
I do think to Bob and Heather's advice, like, we probably should use this, there's been no reason to have a matrix or anything before, or however you want to call it, but man, what a wonderful opportunity to create something as part of the process before we, you know, in conjunction with other agreements. So I hear your concerns, and I, I do, but we, we're
And Doug, I guess a question to you, have they identified any major corporate sponsors outside of this community? Can you share those with us at that time?
Yeah, right now, he's worked with Mid-American Energy, KC's Quickstar, those are the few that I don't want to get in all of them. I can't remember all of the other ones.
And how much, how much signage do we anticipate that the building can handle?
So this one would be a smaller sign underneath the main logo of the Wellness Campus on the side, and a small logo on the entrance.
Sign to the road there.
And then I think it's three final banners inside the building.
So are we dedicating like the gym or the community room or any of those things to a specific entity?
Those are, those opportunities will be there if somebody wants to have Jim naming rights or the court naming rights pool.
I, I, again, you've heard what I said, I, I'm concerned about taking all the money up front and then.
Right. And we want to make sure we have a plan, how we're going to.
Yeah.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Thanks, Mike. Bob, you've had experience in this area, too. I, maybe you can kind of get as with Doug a little bit here and kind of work a little bit, too, on some of those things. And if Jacob would like to tap into your expertise, maybe it'd be a good thing, too, so.
Fine.
Moving forward, though, I'm going to have some more discussions. Are we okay with that?
Come out. Letting who have more discussions?
Sorry, what?
Letting who have more discussions?
Well, what we're asking is, is it okay to move forward on these naming rights to have discussions with legal and set up, set up a prospect here for Matrix and figure out what we're doing?
I do have a question on the thirty percent. So we're using them for multiple purposes, right? Is there any opportunity to negotiate that fee?
We have a contract with them, don't we?
Yeah, we have a one-year contract, yeah. We can certainly try and negotiate in the future.
Just add it to the contract, right, with Wellness Campus?
Their service agreement is for thirty percent of the services to be provided right then through next February. So if they're a lot too low, we can try to.
But it doesn't help us right now.
We okay then, moving forward?
Yeah.
Got your direction, Doug. Okay. City managers report, Doug, you're up again.
Well, as you said earlier, there's a lot of things going on in the community. A lot of departments are very busy at spring and summer. It hasn't rained too hard today. It all came in. A few things in the street department. Notice that West Clinton Street's starting to be closed today. That project is starting. And that information's been out, thanks to Aaron, who's gotten that information out here recently. So, probably starting, it should be about three or three and a half month project. As part of that, they've noticed a, they're gonna add a four-way stop sign at Austin and Buxton. That intersection has restricted visibility. So, they're going to add, turn that into a four-way stop for the safety of traffic, looking through there.
Okay, well, what's that intersection?
Austin and Buxton.
Okay.
Um, this, last week, at the, that's a truck at Irving, the fire department, police department, street department, and we saw every staff there. Had events, that was, that was good. The fire academy has started this, last week?
Yeah, it's been going on a week, two weeks now.
Two weeks now. They have nineteen people in there, two of them are from our department, so that's good. And hopefully be a future recruitment tool for them. But if you see them out in, in front of fires, fire station, working out, doing things, that's part of that academy. And another thing for the, for the fire department, they have ordered their ambulance and he's hopeful it'll be here in September, maybe fall sometime. In Parks and Rec world, if many people came and helped plant and play engagement, opportunity that was Tuesday and Wednesday last week, Buxton Park, just because of Denny Park, and park around the community. So, we appreciate that. I will report and we had many updates about this, but the pool is filled. We found the leak, it was like the seventeenth place that we tried to look for it. But it is holding water, we should still open on May thirty-first. Just that one feature, we call it the toilet bowl feature, will not be operational this year. It's a pipe underground that has a big hole in it. So, well, that'll be closed. And then dismantling the challenge is about five weeks away. There's been lots of volunteers working on the course to get that ready. That's why I pray that it didn't rain hard today, so it washes away all that work that people have done.
Two and a half inches.
Yes, well, we just not twelve yet, right? And then talking a little bit more about the street department, the sweet sweeper has been back in, after multiple repairs this year. So, they've been a little bit delayed in getting cleaned as usual, so. An IWC report here, their summer hours will begin next week. And as we need to obviously thank Heather, she'll be resigning as of March, of May thirtieth. So, many thanks to her for her over a decade of service to the Wellness Campus and all the hard work and tireless that she has done there, so. Sorry to see you go, but okay, thank you very much. And as the community gets, well, it gets close to Memorial Day, there, and you already mentioned a couple of those, but there'll be events on May twenty-sixth around the square. Look for that information on our website or social media. And then May thirtieth, at the end of next Friday, there'll be Sudden Salem and Sticks and Balls Bike Night. So, there'll be a lot of activity on the square. So, we're getting to that busy, busy, busy event season in Indiana, so that's great. And next Thursday, May twenty-ninth, Library Summer Bash will start, will be, so you can come out and support the library for that. And then just one more thing, congrats to all of those that are graduating this weekend. We have a lot of staff that's worked with our, in our facilities that are graduating this year and volunteers and things. And then also Simpson, that did graduate earlier in this week. Luckily, in May, they've helped us as a city. And I'll just close with, this is my last meeting as interim city manager, so thank you all. Thanks to the city staff, there's been a lot of help to make things going. Hopefully get transition for Jacob to start next Wednesday, so it's exciting.
You, Doug.
Thank you to you. You've done a great job, really have. I failed to mention Bike Fest on the fourteenth of June, by the way, and our bike racing. And you can support Kayakota by going online and making your donation and supporting your favorite person in the bike race, so. We'll see who wins that, huh?
Should be record turnout, just to watch the race.
Yeah. And that's also the day of the Dad's Festival up on the square, so there's a couple of things. Just a question. Josh, what we talked about, was it June third or nineteenth that we wanted to talk about Regions Building? Which one was it?
Your choice.
Oh, we put on a June third meeting for an update on Regions.
June second.
Ah, well, that's right. You know, I'll get it right one of these days. June second.
I'll, I'll come June third, okay?
Why don't you do that? You can go over the Regions Building now. All right. I will take a motion to adjourn this meeting. We'll move to a study session after this with a short break. Motion to adjourn. We got a motion, a second, all those in favor? Say aye. Foes? Take about a five-minute break. AP, we're gonna have you go. AP, we're gonna have you go first. Okay, let's go ahead and get started on our study session here. I'm gonna have AP go first, so he can get out of here if he wants to. And then what City Manager Goal is a discussion and direction on a fuel storage tank, so AP, whenever you're ready.
Mayor and Council, I've submitted a report. We, we hired Unified Services, Contracting Services, which is a leading patrolling, uh, patrolling construction company. They provide the maintenance, they, they provide the certifications of, of the existing fuel tanks. They have provided a report and not, it's not, whatever the results of the report, it's not, it's not appealing for us to renew the contract. It's clearly saying it's failed. And our recommendation is to follow the report's recommendation, which is to either get rid of the tanks or try to sell it to James Oil, who's currently using those tanks. I don't think the county was using it, it was James Oil. So, we need your direction to start engaging with James Oil and to see if they want to own it. Or the second option is to try to come up to basically clean up and demo the tanks, fuel tanks.
Okay, I'm sorry, AP, are we talking about, about like all, I mean, do we have several tanks there or are we just?
So, there is, sorry, I'm, I'm sorry. There is the underground storage tanks, which is fine, we are using it for our purposes. The above-ground storage tanks, there is roughly about four or five, four ten-thousand gallon tanks and one vertical, four horizontal above-ground storage tanks, which is ten-thousand gallons each. And then the fifth tank is a vertical five-thousand gallon tank. Those, the above-ground storage tanks are the ones that are in poor shape. We have never used it for the county purposes or any of the purposes that we use for fuel storage. It's only for the purposes for James Oil to store the tank. It doesn't have enough spill protection plan, it's cracked, it's failed. So, there's multiple other things that's been recognized in the report that I've given as a part of the parcel. So, it was one of the reports by Unified Services, and they are, they are the ones recommending us to demo, demolish these tanks.
And will we own those tanks? That'd be a pit to the land.
We have to become the owner, yeah.
The problem with selling it would be that those tanks would be there then and in use when we're trying to do other purposes with that land is the issue too, so. And the other factor is that they were paying just a minimal amount for the rent on those tanks, if I'm not mistaken. Like a hundred bucks a month?
Hundred and eighty, something like that, so a hundred and twenty, I forgot what that amount is, so.
So, the only tank we're really using is the underground tank for county and the school and for, okay?
The twenty-eight degree, all the members in the part of the twenty-eight.
Are these tanks currently empty?
No, they have fuel in them. That's primarily for James Oil, not for the city.
So, they're, they are using them?
Yeah.
And there's a risk of them leaking?
Yes, by the contract previous, by ownership means basically whatever the agreement James Oil had with Warren County. The agreement was for the James Oil to store the tank and county was responsible for the maintenance. I don't know why. So, we don't wanna take the ownership or maintenance of those tanks.
The amount they're paying is not going to cover any maintenance.
So, our option is to sell the tanks or?
Yeah, that's
But to be clear, selling them and not having them remain in place, right?
Yes, to selling them and then have them take it over. Whatever the methods Unified has recognized, clean over, yeah, clean, take, clean the tanks, take it, whatever the, they will be responsible for the cost associated with demolition or
But it would stay there, is what you're saying? No?
If you sell it, they will take it away from, because we don't have the spill protection, we gotta
Right. You want them out of there.
Yes.
We don't wanna be on the hook for remediation if
Yes.
Huge ticket. Are we responsible for the RFP now, for, for the fuel, for, for the members of the twenty-eight?
So far, till December thirty-first, we don't need to do an RFP, but starting January of next year, yes, we'll be responsible, whether we partner with the county or go our own ways, we'll have to determine that.
Okay. Um, are you just needing direction then?
Yes.
And I'm in favor of selling the tanks or dismantling them, but getting them off-site.
I am too. What conversations have we had with James Oil?
So, when Ben Reeves was still the city manager, that is the last time we met with James Oil. And they have cited that, at that time, James Oil indicated the tanks was in good condition. They encouraged us to continue the, um, the agreement that they had previously with the county. They are sending us the, the checks every month. We are not cashing them in, we are just storing them till we finish this unified study, you know? So, the last discussion we had, they were basically recommending us to keep the tanks and continue the, if not, they wanted to buy the tanks from the city. If not, they wanted to buy the tanks from the city.
But not to land and not have them there, is that correct?
Correct. We don't want it, even if they want to keep it, we don't want it because there's no, inadequate spill protection there currently.
So what would they do with the tanks? haul them off and put them someplace else?
Yes, they'll have to find a place to.
How do we determine fair market value for those tanks? Does this company that did the study also give us what those tanks are worth?
Yeah, they are completely shot down. It'll cost us money to dispose it right now.
But as far as, if James Oil bought them and moved them, I mean, how do we come up with a price per tank?
So I think there's no value for the tanks currently, the way I see it. It's, there's additional expense for us to dispose. It's cracked, it's failed. So there's no value, I don't think, other than James Oil, even if you bid it out. I don't think we'll get the money's worth for the tank. In fact, it'll cost us more money to dispose it. So even if James Oil proposes, we'll take it for a dollar.
I, I, I know a gentleman who knows people at Seneca Tank.
Okay.
I, I think maybe we might want to look into it a little bit before we just give them away. I, I can certainly make some phone calls.
Sure.
I'd be glad to take that away. I just don't want to give something away for a dollar.
Yes.
Possibly we could make some, some revenue off of it.
Absolutely, yeah. We can explore with Unified and Seneca groups. I don't have any contacts with Seneca, but we have worked with Unified. We can check that out.
If you could just shoot me an email with what we have, as far as actual tanks and what the sizes are?
Yes.
I'll, I'll take it from there.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Josh, maybe you'd know this. So if we were to sell that land as is, could it be something that a developer would take care of and it wouldn't be on our dime?
Potentially, yeah. The risk is in the interim. What happens in the interim and do you make any potential problems worse? I mean, it is a big number to fix some of the stuff, depending on it's not insurmountable. I have a site. Just got approved, your planning commission meeting tonight in another state that we have a monitoring thing and it is what it is. Yes, but let's try to get rid of them.
The other side of that is, do we ask James Oil to cease and desist use of that and get their fuel out of there immediately with the cracks and everything?
I mean, I would like, try to get, move quickly to try to sell the things, get someone to take them. But as part of it, it has to be like, you know, potentially you can't use them anymore. You need your stuff out of there.
That is top priority, stop using them, thank you.
We certainly don't want them filling them anymore.
You know what, they're double walled?
I think they are, I don't know where, I forgot. It's in the report. I can't remember whether it's single wall or double wall.
They're single, yeah.
Fortunate?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Other all, they've been there forever. I mean, when the gentleman that were running that facility, they had their stuff there for a long time. So, I mean, it's been there for years, probably since the 40s.
It's always you. Ouch.
Yes, Ron, yes. Ah, you're a funny man. So do you have direction yet or you?
Thank you.
Good with everything? Thank you, AP. All right, so then the next movement is off to the the City Manager Goals and what our top two or three or four priorities are here and be able to get some things in place so that we can have a six-month review and have some specific goals along with those. So I'd open that up to any discussion. What do you think? One, two, three or four?
Go ahead. I did three. So I, my first was the budget. Finances drive everything, so I think that should be the, the top goal for Jacob. And then I have like things highlighted that I just felt should be going with the budget as opposed to being something that was separate. So like COLA salary policies, staffing plans, IWC, shared services and CIP. It felt like those are like subcategories of the budget rather than a separate type of a goal or objective. Like I think when he's going through everything, that's just something that should be considered when doing it. Number two for me was development procedures. Because if we can streamline that process to help growth, that helps our finances, which drives everything to hit goal number three of building projects and facilities. Because if we can streamline, streamline our growth projects, then that will help our tax evaluation grow, which then helps our bonding capacity. So those are my top three and why.
Okay. Anybody else want to go?
Well, I took a different approach. I started with our strategic priorities and then these, what, this list of goals and priorities under those as the objectives. Because what we struggled with evaluating Ben was we had too many things. So we stuck with these four and then these things become the objectives under the priorities. And obviously, we're not going to ask him to accomplish this entire list. So I chose the things that I felt were most important in the first six months.
What you were saying is that these would be your priorities, but you have specific things underneath those that fall into that category, is that correct? So what specific things would you take maybe as the top three or so to fall into?
So for resource optimization, I have development procedures, COLA salary policies, staffing plans, organizational chart.
And that's all under optimization or?
Yes, resource optimization.
What about the other ones then? How would you do that?
So our welcoming hometown, internal relationships, regionalization opportunities, employee engagement committee initiatives, again, I didn't pick everything because I didn't feel like everything.
No, that's right.
In the first six months.
Right, right.
Was achievable.
Right. So let's, let's hold on that for a second. Let's get some other input and I have an idea, maybe we can work with that, so. Bob, what do you have?
I, I was gonna say, I was similar and, and in addition to the budget, I think that's kind of a no-brainer. You know, at least getting you, it's had norms around a little bit. But then the welcoming hometown part, I had, you know, meeting with the internal constituents, the department heads and staffing and whatnot. But then I also had taking a look at the facilities and, and understanding the conversations that have been had around those as the newbie. I'm trying to think, okay, what's my head spinning with right now that I just love to look at all of you and kind of suck it all in so I know some of the stuff I'm reading. But in doing that, and then I also then go to the economic development part with knowing external constituencies, both in this community and regionally with Norwalk, Carlisle, Des Moines and, and taking that out. I think, I kept trying, I kept having to stop back up and say, we're talking six months. We aren't talking a year.
Yes.
And, and that was the hardest part for me and trying to do it was what's realistic in six months. There were a few things I hit on.
Did you have anything else, Bob?
No, go ahead.
Josh?
Similar, you know, the, the hard part here is six months. I think it's very normal for all of us to want to just have a thousand goals, but what's realistic? I think the first ninety days is, I mentioned this earlier, is really just about, you fit it under any one of these that you want. Our welcoming hometown, economic development, right, resource optimization, but meeting internally, meeting externally, really getting an understanding for what he's coming into, you know, also knowing that we hired someone making the conscious decision because he does seem to be very fast at learning and care very much about learning. But we hired someone that doesn't have a lot of or any Iowa experience. That's gonna take some time. I think it's important to really prioritize those meetings. It's really easy when you're a doer to not find time to burn a half day to go have one meeting in Des Moines, but that might be the right meeting to have. So I would like some type of prioritization on those types of things. Again, the budget, I think, is, is a natural next one. I've struggled to have like, what should the goal be in six months? I don't know. I, I know that, you know, we're talking about a budget that has to be perfected by, you know, a year from now, a year plus from now. Not just yet, right? I have no great goal from that other than just understand or flip a budget. I think it'll probably become pretty clear, you know. So, and again, I would like to see, I think I have a different view than some on our development process. I've never found ours to be onerous in my years of developing here. But I do think that we're in a spot where we have a lot that has happened. We have a lot more that could be happening. And just personally seeing what they do in Brookings and be interested in, after taking a couple of months of what he can quickly apply from them to us. I think one thing that's gonna shift again here for all of us is we really want to be solid on our processing or our prioritization is, you know, we just lived through the threat of TIF getting taken away. I know that we write our agreements differently than we have in the past, but also like, man, I'm gonna be a lot more cautious about any agreements involving TIF for the next year or two while we don't know what the State House is doing. So I think it's important to again, prioritize our process overall, but even, you know, with all the development agreements we have recently and the ones we have coming to talked about matrices earlier, matrices, some type of prioritization within that of the projects coming up. How do we assess that from a risk and a budget impact potential? You know, we have some big decisions to make, so. Those are things that I was thinking about, trying to boil it down to the, the top three things, knowing what we talked about here. Again, knowing that we've talked repeatedly about budgets and buildings, you know. These are the ways that we, I think the first steps to get his feet wet to make some big progress on some of those things.
So there's a reason I got out of management, it's because I hate doing this stuff here. So my answer is I procrastinated and haven't looked at it and just being honest.
Sure.
But budget, obviously, and I, I agree with Josh, there's no way you're gonna be able to perfect the budget in six months, but you certainly have to have a grasp for it and, and what House File 718 or, as the gentleman earlier said, 178. It, it's dueing to us. I, I think, I think so. I think budget's probably top priority. Just to dig in and, and, and know a little bit about it. But staffing plans and organizational charts, I think, kind of go hand in hand, honestly. We have a couple of things where the IWC isn't on our city staffing model, right? I mean, they're, they're not being paid what cities, other city employees are. So I think that needs to be looked at. And also staffing plans or charts, Steve's point, with, with the police. And that kind of also goes with the budget as well, right? Well, what is, what does 22 officers look like? Well, what does 20 officers look like, right? So I, I'd like to, I think that should be a possible.
I think it's part of that, Ron, to jump in real quick. I mean, we still intentionally left the Community Development Director position open. So I don't think it's a bad thing to say, here's six months, get everybody and have your staffing plan, you know, first steps of an org chart. That would probably be reasonable within six months, definitely.
And the plan to bring IWC staff in to the comp model. And that's gonna have a significant budget impact, but we have to integrate them at some point. I know, it all goes back to the budget.
So that was my number one. Like to perfect it, needs to understand the weirdness of Iowa and House File 718 and those impacts so that when he's trying to craft it.
And he, through his interview process.
Yeah.
Showing that he's already studying our budget and looking at those things. So I have no doubt that he's gonna come in and already have ideas.
He'll educate us.
There's a phone call today, already had some ideas about different things, so.
The easy part is, is talking about what the, what the goals are, but now what do we do? How do we craft them and write them so that they're obtainable or they're able to be graded on, right?
Right. How do we measure them?
Yes.
Is it mayor, something that maybe we do, like what we kind of did with Ben at the annual where we talk about the things and go, do you feel this is achievable, rather than laying something out now? And he comes in and he's like, I can't do it in six months. I'd need 12, you know, because of the learning curve or just tossing that out there.
I think, I think the answer to your question is that they have to be, to some extent, a little vague because you are working for six months and he's gotta have that learning opportunity. So I, and I, and that's when I said I had some ideas or maybe, and again, I'm just throwing some things out here. But, you know, resource optimization is, and to my, in my thinking, is really your, your budget and using the budget effectively. But I think what we do is we just essentially, in that particular case with the budget, we say, you know, demonstrate to us that you have a working knowledge of the budget and how we're gonna get to a point where we've got our departments at, at an even keel here and we're still within that 25% reserve. I, I think it's just that we, we have, and he can demonstrate a, a working knowledge of the budget by when we do our treasures reports through, in three months from now. And he's, he can add things into that or he can talk about that and he can show that through some of the discussions that we have. And I'm hoping somebody's writing this down so that if we do decide to go this route here. But I think, I think that the resource optimization is the budget, in my opinion. And that we essentially say, you have a working knowledge of that within six months, but not a complete handle on it. But you understand it and that during some of your, your, during some of the treasures reports, he can provide input in some of those kinds of things. That shows me that he's moving in that direction and he's gonna have some ideas about where it goes in the next fiscal year. The other thing that as far as promote public safety, health and safety, that's our building materials, that's our building plan. And that he has some thoughts and ideas about how we go about optimizing the dollars that we may have available, if any, or how much, or how we're gonna use, whether it's a bonding process or use what we can find to make sure that we can get some changes made so that we move out of this building, the administration out of this building in regions and get it figured out. I, I think it's easy to say that you just say, you know, and he's already talked about a couple of different things. I, I don't know if he, he talked about it in the second interview about the 2030 plan or whatever it looks like and having to come up with another one. And back to Josh's point, it'll be interesting to see what he puts together as a group of people to work towards trying to figure out how we're gonna solve these problems down the road in a seven-year to ten-year plan. And maybe that's the idea is you say, okay, what, can you come up with a five-year plan or a seven-year plan of what we're gonna do somewhere down the road? But again, I don't wanna, I don't want to put too much on him on that first six months because it sets him up for failure, in my opinion. So essentially, again, you know, show that he's working on, you know, having a long-term plan on what we can do with buildings and structures. And that means police and fire and that means some of the other things that we need to have. So that, to me, solves a budget issue. It solves buildings thing and then back to the eternal relationships. And frankly, that's the development process too, because that's his natural gig. And so if we're looking at buildings and things, it's talking about additional developments that's gonna have to take place, which And so if we're looking at buildings and things, it's talking about additional developments that's gonna have to take place, which is your abatement question, which is a lot of other things too about how we go about doing that. The U shape apartments are gonna be coming up in August. That's the trial is set for August.
Yeah, knock on wood.
And so, you know, maybe it's a thing of about how do we talk about infill and in development infill, you know, and how do we do something in that area? The other the other thing then is is internal relationships and staffing. He's gonna have to sit back and and he's already said, he's already told me that he's gonna sit back. He's gonna meet everybody. He's gonna come in and meet the departments. But he we saw today in our in our phone conversation, he's very contemplative, even in the conversations. There were periods of time of of a fair amount of silence there and then he would tell us what he was thinking. But so he's very contemplative in that sense. So I think we have to give him the ability to have time to listen, learn and then act and lead, you know, back to the three Ls, listen, learn and lead. And I guess how we finalize those to come up with objectives that he can reach within six months. Again, fairly simple. Does he understand the budget? Does he know where we're headed? And can he show us, demonstrate that through discussion when we have treasurer's reports? To me, it's a fairly simple process. You know, budget building, you know, where we go on the regions building, what are we doing and what's his plan for the future? Make sure he's got a plan. Or at least an outline of something of where he thinks we can go. And he will, he'll have that. I I have no doubt that he'll have those things in place. And as far as the internal relationships, he's gonna sit down eventually and go through all these departments and figure out where what needs to be done, if there's anything needs to be changed. And back to Josh's point on community development, I think he knows pretty much right off the bat that we're gonna have to be looking long-term. And, you know, the part of the, you know, the thing today was, you know, and and in in one of the in the department head meeting, I brought up the fact that we need to be moving forward and and again, we are. But again, who's we've had a liaison. Charlie was our liaison with Main Street in this, also the facade program. And we've got six hundred fifty thousand dollars in grant money that we gotta, you know, we're gonna be using for facades. And so that's, all those things fall into place, but again, I those aren't on his plate. We just need to be very clear. How do you demonstrate what you're what you're gonna evaluate him on? And I think easy with budget. Again, I don't wanna beat the dead horse here, but, you know, it's pretty simple. Does he understand the budget? Does he know where we're going and can he show us that we're gonna, he's gonna help us stay in the black? Fairly simple.
I guess I see it a little differently. If he understands the budget, then he is gonna bring forward COLA salary policies, the staffing plans, the org chart that all support the budget.
I agree, but I don't think he's gonna be able to do that in six months. I I think I think he's that that's asking a lot of him. I think we have to let him have the opportunity to do that. He can be working on it, but I don't know. Am I wrong? No, I mean, I mean, is that throwing a lot on his plate in the first six months?
I think you're wrong.
Okay.
But I I tend to generally agree with Melissa. I think you have to have something, right? For the budget, what's our biggest measurable step? That makes the biggest part of the budget, right? Over six months and I try to like boil it down and boil it down and boil it down. I think you have enough. Try to remove some more. To your point, I think we'll naturally see an understanding of of the budget through treasurer's reports and stuff like that. If you said in six months, we want you to have a plan for your org chart and staffing studies, just in six months, have that done.
That's simple.
If you do that, you know you're gonna have to have the budget in mind within that.
Right.
Right.
Biggest mover of the needle and and the only way to accomplish your plan is if you can actually accomplish it with a budget. So to me, if you want very simple goals that are actually gradable, you know, trackable, attainable, right? This doesn't mean there's not eight other steps that are part of that. It also allows him the flexibility to go about it his own way. Here's the measurable. That's what I came up with on the the budget one, you know, for me, I I went over my three. Third is set your plan, begin implementing your plan for economic and community development, right? Well, what does that mean? Means you gotta have your processes updated. You have to have a decision on whether you're hiring that position or not, which also ties back into the budget. It's the biggest department that has impact on all the things you guys have talked about, that we've talked about. You know, the one I struggle to have a good measurement on, a box check is, I think we've all said it in different ways, the importance of it, but like those internal and external meetings. What is it? What does that look like? Well, obviously, he's gonna meet with every department head and every staff member, right? Does that, I mean, do you go as detailed in the goal of like meet Carlisle, meet Norwalk, go meet the partnership, you know? I don't know. Do you, but I think you just have to have something that shows that that's important. Because I would hope, given his background and a lot of what we shared in his interviews, he is meeting with folks at the State House. He is meeting with the partnership. He is meeting with Norwalk, Carlisle, right, with all these different entities that matter, making that a priority. In addition to all of our internal staff. And then if he has time, he can meet with us after meeting all those people. That, I mean, that's that's where I'm at, but hopefully whatever.
Thank you. So for your measurable part of that, you do have to spell it out. Otherwise, you don't have something to quantify that goal.
So the org chart.
Go back to review and we, that's what we really need.
Have the org chart and the staffing plan in place, I could be done in six months.
I mean, to me, those account for all the different items. He's gonna look at COLA as a part of that. He's gonna look at the different staffing levels. He's gonna look at the reserve levels. He's gonna have to, you have to have working knowledge of all that
Right.
To attain those two very trackable things and ultimately two things that probably chart the course for our future budgets as much as anything, right? Again, staffing is what costs and, you know.
And Josh, the perfect timing for that too is in six months. It's crazy to sound, but that's when budget's gonna be starting. So, I mean, the timing of that being a measurable goal works out perfect for budgets to say, what's your staffing plan? What's your org chart? That's gonna hit the budget that is gonna, Jackie will have probably been already started working on for F Y twenty-seven. So the timing works out really well too for when we go into those meetings in January.
Yep. I think that goes back to where I struggle with the internal, external meetings. It's like you wanna track it, but do this goal like and and just to do his job and and who he sees as a person that he's gonna meet with internal staff. I mean, they're gonna be an integral part of it, right? So are you just doubling up something, double up something that's hard to quantify? You know, I do, I I don't know.
I think you got, I think you got three goals here that that seem to fall into place. If I wrote them down correctly, it's basically have your org chart and your staffing plan in place in six months. Set your plan for community and economic development and then show us what that plan is. And and then continue to work on regional and state relationships, which can be a lot of different things. But we've already got him set up for the June meeting. I mean, with Norwalk, Carlisle and Milo, that's set up for June tenth. And then they meet, we'll meet every month after that. So, so I mean, I I think I think those again, you folks can correct me if I'm wrong, but it seems to me like we've kind of settled on that because it does encompass a lot of things that you mentioned as well. But I don't know if they're as detailed as maybe you'd like them, but I mean, it's pretty simple. You have the org chart and staffing plan. He's got a plan for community development, economic development and regional and state relationships. Pretty easy.
And you have to have those things in there for the measurements. That's where we got caught, not being able to facilitate the review process effectively. So we have to go into detail with these items, what we want tied back to each goal.
Well, yes and no. I mean, I I I think to Josh's point, if I'm not mistaken, you get COLA, you get all those other things worked into the into the staffing plans or the the org chart and how he's gonna staff everything. You're gonna have to figure out your COLA and all those other kinds of things. So I don't know.
And that's what I'm saying.
Oh, okay. Okay. We're saying the same thing. Okay. All right. I'm misunderstanding. Okay.
That's my bedtime mayor. That's why it's hard to understand.
And and those all tie up to our strategic priorities.
Right.
And we can go one step further in the goal process. You can weight them differently. If you really want him spending more time on resource optimization because budget is our number one priority, you can weight that fifty percent and put twenty-five percent on the other two.
Would be okay with me.
I tell the thing when you talk about regional and state relationships and getting those peoples, I would also include the word local in there.
Yes.
Yes. So it's understood.
Right. So are we okay or do we need to make additional comments?
Who writes this up?
Say, I can work with Connie if you want.
Or do you want to? Yeah, if you can send me the notes, I can try to structure it and
Perfect.
Send it to everyone for feedback.
I was gonna say I'm I'm not it, but she volunteered. Wonderful.
Ron, you're all. As soon as that came up, Ron, you went.
Yeah.
Me.
All right. Not the favorite stuff. Anything else? I'd say we're done. Okay. Thank you. Everybody appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
God, thank you.
That's where someone's going.
Yeah.
Sitting at my desk with the headset on.
Yes, but you.